We're good to start. You want to start live?
Okay, we're live now.
Good. So counsel, I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting for special committee of the whole meeting for March 21st, March 1st, 2022. I guess I'm dreaming there with adoption of the agenda. So I'm going to motion, Counselor Brooks Hill, Counselor Charlotte, all in favor. Motion carried. And any, let's just go into business. So we will leave it to you, Ms. McCabe, to lead us through.
Sorry, Your Worship. Can can we please adopt the minutes from February 20th, February 15?
Sorry, yep. We'll watch them in the minutes from February 26th. Counselor Ryan, Counselor Brooks Hill, all in favor. Motion carried. Any business arising from those minutes. Jane, we'll carry on. All right, Ms. McCabe, you're up.
Thank you, Your Worship. So today's agenda is we'll kind of follow a similar process as to what we did two weeks ago when we went over the general fund. So this time we're going to be talking about the utilities funds. And so this is a continuation of that process effectively. So today we'll talk about that. And then next week we'll continue on with talking about the whole thing and making some decisions. So this is more of an informational thing, giving you a state of the nation, so to speak, for the utilities, so that you understand the conditions and the things that need to be done. And then, of course, that can inform the budget going forward. So yeah, so this, this, for the utilities, I didn't do a budget change summary like I did for the general fund primarily because there's not as much change on the operating side for the utilities as what there is for the general fund. And so I'll start with the water fund on the operating side. There's the biggest change in that will be the reduction in the debt servicing costs in 2022. So there was long-term debt for the Downey Lift Station, and that has been paid in full now. And so that $318,000 and change was the principal and interest cost that the city was paying, or the utility fund was paying every year to service that debt. And so now it's not required. And so in accordance with some of the policies that we follow, that money will now go into the reserve fund to be built up for future capital expenditures. When we look at the sewer side, it's similar situation. There's not a lot of change from the expense side, just the usual, oh, sorry, just the usual adjustments for wages. And then, again, a little bit of a reduction in debt servicing because one of the long-term debts that we have over there actually just got refinanced at a lower interest rate. And then on the Big Eddie operational side, it's just some small increases for cost of living adjustments and equipment maintenance. And that was it. So I think the big story really, or the big discussion or information that you need today will be on the capital side of things. So the Big Eddie, which has been recently fully upgraded, there's no proposed upgrades to that, to that, there are no capital basically in that one, except for something out a few more years. So there's no conversation about that. It'll be all based on water and sewer. And so, yeah, so there's a, in the sewer side, we have finished, there is a study that was completed to give us the condition of the sewer system. And that study has provided us with annual spending amounts to go into the capital plan. And so that is what has been put in the capital plan at this point. On the water side, the study is still undergo, under, underway or ongoing. And so the, the information that's being put into the capital plan for the water side is more is estimates based on staff's knowledge. And then, so those two things are going to create quite a lot of pressure on the reserve funds for the utilities. And so if you look at, after the report in your binders, before the water tab, there is the 15-year summary of the reserves and surpluses. And so that kind of shows you, when you go out in 10 years' time in the water utility, there's going to be some challenges because there's not enough money to support the ongoing maintenance that's going to be required. The sewer fund starts having issues in 2023. So there will have to be some decisions about what can be done to resolve that. And that could be, there's a number of different options that staff will be bringing forward to council to, to address that. So, yeah, so if you've got any questions about the capital side of things in particular, Steve is here to help answer. I think he might have some pretty pictures to show you as well. Steve, did you want to chime in?
Director, I am available for any questions as, as Director McCabe has indicated, there will be a report coming forward next council meeting, next Tuesday, for discussion on the sanitary sewer INI. And I do have a little bit of a dog and pony show to present at that point in time. However, if there's any questions as to today's discussion, I can certainly provide any, or try and answer any questions that council may have.
And Counselor Ryan, Counselor.
So my question is for Ms. McCabe, the, in the report, it mentions that the water fund has an annual 5% increase in the current operating plan. But in the 15-year water operating plan, it's showing 6% is what's been used for the revenue or for the water rate growth?
Yes, that would also include growth. So that's assuming that there's a certain amount of growth as well. So the rates will be increased by the fee increase. And then also there's usually, I usually allow for 1% growth in the number of customers. So it's for new customers that come in and join the system.
Okay, and is that standard across all utilities?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Counsel Ryan.
The 15-year budget for sewer, does that include or take into account the upgrade that we've just got our $10 million grant for, or where are we at? How, should the grant take care of the maintenance? Should we be in a good state, in a good state that once the money's put into it?
Are you talking about the 10 million, or the, well, I guess it's actually a $9.8 million grant for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades?
Yes.
Yes, that's in the, right now, the wastewater treatment plant upgrades are in the first year of the 15 years of the capital plan. So it's in year 2022. And so that's tab five behind the sewer. It's a yellow tab five. And so, yeah, so there's 9.8 million for grant funding. And then the total cost of that project is 14.6 million. Whether that project gets done in 2022 or 2023 remains to be seen. We may move it out to 2023 before the budget cycle is finished.
But there should be, once the money is spent, I mean, we do, there should be a general reduction in our annual, annual expense for sewer upkeep, I would think.
Do you worship to? Thank you. Rob, the, the 15-year plan for the, the plant expansion itself will mean that the plant itself will be in good shape for probably the next 20 years with very little major capital expenditures required. That does not address some other shortfalls in the system such as ongoing maintenance of pipe. It also does not include new lift stations that will likely be required around Powerhouse if the Johnson Heights area develops. It will also require some additional pump upgrades at the Siloit River Station to handle future development, growth around RMR and Mackenzie Village. And so, yes, the plant will be in good shape. There will be other ongoing regular program expenditures in order to maintain the system. Mostly, it's going to be in our pipes, which are anywhere from, as I was told today, today is the city's birthday, 123, I think, is the date. So, so we do have pipes that are well beyond their expected life cycle. And as Counselor Palmer would say, yes, the sky is falling according to engineers on a regular basis. But we're in pretty good shape, I think, for the near term. We do need to spend some money on the capital end of it, and that is expressed in this budget. I would also point out at this budget on that same tab that the Lower Arrow Heights area has petitioned the city to start to consider creating a local service area to expand sewer system around the hospital area. And so there will be other projects that are coming forth attached to this. Are they going to be operating expenses? They will be expenses that will be directly attached to those parcels. And then, of course, the loan that will come forward to finance the city's portion of the wastewater treatment plant expansion will be amortized over 15 or 20 years. I don't think we've addressed that question yet. But those numbers will then get put into the 15-year plan as a repayment schedule in here, too. I'm sorry for the long-winded response to your question, Rob. But any, any other questions? Please feel free.
So we're adjusting the DCCs this year for, by the inflation rate roughly. But for the future growth, the DCCs will have a more comprehensive look at the DCCs to finance that growth in the future. So, you know, is that built into your estimates here, Ken? I mean, the DCC's adjustments and all those things that we're anticipating, it's tough to build a budget if, or tough to understand if that's not built into it.
So the DCCs are collected for DCC projects, but there aren't any DCC projects currently included in this 15-year plan. This is all about maintaining and repairing the current system that we have, not doing any expansions or projects for, they're DCC-funded.
And so I would like to, there, there may be a few items here, but they're not of large significance from a funding perspective. They're all like replacing pumps. And if we do need to build a new lift station around Powerhouse, that'll be under $1 million. And the lift station that we have now is currently oversubscribed as is. So the, there will be a portion of that, that will be attributable to new development. And we will go through that exercise comprehensively with the completion of the water master plan, transportation master plan, sanitary. And then we can put together the, the new updated DCC costs for council's consideration.
Any other questions, counselors? Counselor Palmer and then Counselor Charlotte.
All right, Counselor Charlotte.
Counselor Charlotte?
I was just curious about those master plans and the status of those. What do you expect to see? Like the liquid waste management plan, the, the plans that?
Completion of them?
Yeah.
Any comment, Mr. Black?
Liquid Waste Management Plan is complete. And so there are components in there that we do need to continue pushing forth. Those are things like the fat oil grease bylaw, the cross-connection bylaw, additional planning for future connections to the sewer system. However, in general, in general terms, the sanitary is complete. The water master plan, I expect to have a draft, I think, this Friday from our consultants. And so we're almost done there. And the timing for the transportation master plan, I believe, is still on track for June. And so everything should be complete early summer.
Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, Mary Souls. And thank you, Tanya and Steve, for the information and presentation. Boy, we've been all over the map. It's a very short period of time. So we've talked about operating water, operating sewer, capital, sewer, sort of, kind of brushed around Big Eddie a bit. So I feel very scattered right now just because we've been all over the map. But so just on a high level, you know, we're, we're almost halfway through the year. So the expenditures, to me, this is, I, you know, it's just carrying on the theme about how we are more proactive. And so I'm looking really forward to that. And I was thinking in conjunction with those master plans, looking to some really robust discussions come this fall on a little bit more detail. So, but I'll just have a, put out a few questions. And so the local service area, so just picking up on a few, few things. The local service area for the hospital, is that's not reflected in the 15-year financial plan, or is it?
If I may, Tanya?
Yep.
Sorry, sorry. Yes, it is, it is shown there as it's called the Lower Arrow AH Sewer Expansion, which is the last call, or last row on the sewer fund 15-year financial plan. And it's budgeted there for, what, 3.5 over two years?
Yeah. So, so let's start with that one then. So according to this plan, you expect to pay, spend 1.7 million in 2022?
It's, it's unlikely that we'll spend it 2022. We'll likely push this out a couple of years, a year later. So '23 and then '24.
Yeah. So, I mean, that'll be sort of an ongoing theme, and I've kind of hinted at that before.
Yeah.
So I'll sort of pass that over to our Director of Finance to put pressure on where numbers really belong. The, so just on that same theme, wastewater treatment plant upgrade, so we have, what?
14, 14.6.
14.6 million. So I guess the question is, is that really going to be spent in 2022?
No, it will, we will be pushing that out to 2023 in the final version.
In the final version. So will it really be all spent in 2023? So don't, don't answer, but internally, look at those questions because I really would like to see a financial plan that is close as we are able to emulate future reality rather than find the sky. DCC projects, you said no DCC projects. So did I hear that right for the sewer capital? No DCC projects of any substance?
Yeah, the, excuse me, the only, the only items that I have seen on this, on the long-term capital plan are some pub, Well Street Lift Station upgrades, which are going to be driven by development.
Right.
Because we'll need new pump, larger pumps to service.
Okay, so things like the, the sewer grinder, which is not till 2027, would that be, that sounds like a DCC project to me?
No, that is a replacement. We have, we just put in a grinder last, last year. And there's, there was a previous grinder that had been put in place, I believe, about seven to 10 years ago. Forgive me, I don't know the exact date, but that would be a replacement for that grinder at that time.
Okay. I just find a little bit surprising that there's no DCCs over the next substance over the next 15 years. So I guess there's a question on what's recovered. I'm going to go back to some of the earlier stuff, if I may. So on the, so with the, on tab three?
What color is yellow?
Tab blue. Sorry, I'm going back to water now.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, by the way, for the, the numbers. I like the way you've got the budget and actuals from the last three years and then the, like going back five years, I find that really helpful. And I find it really helpful, like on this spreadsheet where you, you have the budget for 2022. That, so that, that's a really big improvement from my perspective. Some of the other ones later on starts at 2022 and goes forward. That's that 15-year plan. But I don't have that little, that little piece of information, sort of like it in a way. But I don't want more numbers on the page either. So the. But that's our general comment. Water rates. Was looking at your water rates compared to the, so the budget compared to actuals. And so it seems that we've had consistently, the numbers seem to be off, not a whole lot. And I can, is there some, I just sort of wonder where, where we're going. And I think that is also the case. I'll be bringing that up with the contracted professional services as well. Sort of, but, and I think there's some of those others. So when there's the actuals, and then if we look at the three, three-year average, because it would seem to me that the three-year average of actuals should be pretty close, plus the 2% inflation to the real, real number. So what if you have any comments on that, Director of Finance?
Actually, not, not, not at the moment, I don't. But I'll certainly can have a look. You're talking about the water rates, right, on that, yeah? I'll have a look. Because it is, it's under, or, well, it goes under and sometimes it's over. It just depends on the year. Some years, the budget is more than what we received. In other years, it's less than what we received.
Yeah. And I think there'll be one later on. The contracted professional services, I had a comment here that should be negative. I'll, maybe I'll ask you that separately later on.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Water Capital Fund. Golf course well treatment. So we have that. And I know it's not until 2030. So is, is there a reason why we're anticipating, you know, in eight years or so, $6 million, so doing treatment at the golf course? That'd be to the Director of Engineering.
To Counselor Palmer, yes, we have completed a study approximately, oh, boy, excuse me, it would have been completed in February of 2018, prior to my arrival, which was titled "The Water Risk Assessment Report Completed by Michael Haney for the City." Most of the, the numbers that are now shown in our 15-year capital plan are based upon this risk assessment. The risk assessment has basically said, look, we've got all of our water coming from Greeley. Should something happen to Greeley Treatment Plant, the watershed, or we lose the water main from Greeley to the city, we would be in a dire situation. And so as engineers, we like to be redundant and ensure that we have alternatives to that issue. And so we want to make sure that we can plan on having alternative source of water should we need it in the future. The second point is, is that based upon our current growth projections, we are not 100% sure that Greeley itself will have the capacity, Greeley Creek will have the capacity to supply the city's future build-out needs. And so in order to address that, we have undertaken a watershed study in conjunction with Water Resources Canada and the provinces to install a weir so that we can actually start measuring the volume of water coming out of Greeley at high and low flows so that we can better understand the consequences of climate change on that watershed. In addition, our water treatment plant has a capacity of expansion of, I believe, about one more megaliter per day. So it's all very, very tight as far as future utilization of Greeley as a sole source. So that is why we're including an alternative source, which we currently use for high demand time in the city. It is the, the treatment, the water coming out of the golf course is treated with chlorine to make sure that there's no pathogens in it. However, it is high in manganese and iron, which is very typical of most groundwater in this area. And so the treatment is to provide treatment for the manganese and iron, which typically turns your clothes red when you wash them. And so it's typically not a good source of water to be used without treatment.
Thank you. Excellent, if you like red clothes. Yeah, so thank you. And I thought, I sort of anticipated, and maybe that's, you know, why that sort of bigger discussion and where those sort of footnotes, because I sort of wondered what that information, that was really helpful.
If I may, Counselor, my apologies for interrupting. The master plan, which will be coming forward, will have all of these items also addressed as far as what we should expect as a community to be needed for the build-out scenario of our community. And so I expect that we will have a very robust discussion at that time when, when we come forward with that plan for council's consideration and adoption.
Yeah, great. Couple little minor ones. So the Greeley filter replacement, $800,000. So we just replaced that. It seemed to me that we were able to extend out the life beyond that. Just a question mark whether that's premature or not. I, that, of course, that's pushed out to year five in the five-year financial plan. And, and that may very well be an appropriate location. I think there's a question whether it will actually get pushed out. And that sort of forces my point about the 15-year plan, about it's, it's really kind of pie in the sky. Pump station operation and maintenance. So we got under capital. And if you could just, so we have $100,000 there for 2023. And when I see O and M, I'm questioning whether that's really capital or not. And I know it's an age-old question, but if you could just comment on that.
It will depend on what's actually involved in that number as to whether it goes through O and M or capital. There are policies, the city has financial policies that require us to capitalize expenditures over a certain amount, depending on, obviously, the class of the asset that's being purchased or repaired or bettered. And so, yes, I will be having a conversation. We'll go over those numbers and see whether it's actually operating in nature or whether it's capital in nature.
Great, thank you.
Do you have one more thing before we go to other counselors?
Let other counselors go.
Okay, Counselor Elliott and Counselor Ryan.
We're, we're building a 15-year financial plan. Has water metering been considered? Or where does that play into this discussion?
Mr. Black?
Thank you, Your Worship. It is an item of discussion. It has not borne any fruit at this point in time, nor have we planted the seeds to initiate that process. It is a very valuable process to go through from operations perspective, making sure people that use water pay for the water and people that aren't using the water don't pay for that. If it's council's direction for us to push forward with a presentation and option report for your consideration, we would be pleased to do that. At this point in time, as I've said, we, it's not part of our current planning. Though, in my opinion, it should be something we consider very strongly.
Yeah. We're budgeting $6 million for a secondary source of water. I mean, maybe metering should be done before that, that money is allocated.
Counselor Ryan.
Yeah, and so this one's for Ms. McCabe. On the item 9A, the agenda, the water operating fund, the, what is the total debt refund transfers? What is that?
Muted, Ms. McCabe.
Sorry, there's a dog barking outside my window, so I was trying to mute myself. Sorry, where are you looking at, Counselor Ryan?
The jet, the item 9A, the water operating fund, historical budget to actual.
Ah, okay. Yes, so that would be, just a minute, I'm just trying to get there. Ah, yes, now I've got there. So you're asking what the debt refund transfer is?
Yes.
So when, when the city borrows money, long-term, from the Municipal Finance Association, they hold back 1% of the amount we borrow, and they hold that back for potential default costs. And so then they take that money and they invest it. And at the end of the term of the loan of the, when we pay it back, then we get back some, the, the earnings, the investment earnings on that money. So that's what that is. So usually there's a return at the end of every, when any, when any long-term debt matures, there's usually a certain amount of this quote debt refund. So it's, that's what it is. It's the interest or the, the investment income that was earned on that money.
Then it's showing as an expense.
Yes, because what we do then is, under policy, we put it into the reserve account. So it comes in as a revenue and then it goes out as an expense on the operating side.
Okay, so it's, it's on, it's under revenues as total debt recoveries and refunds? And then again?
Yes.
That's, okay.
Yeah.
And the total transfers to reserves, the $50,000 in 2017, 20, yeah, 2018? Yeah, in 2017, but in an actual, like, and goes down $50,000 and so on. And then there's another line item lower on for transfers to the water capital reserve fund? So those, like, what is the difference between those two items?
So the first one with the total transfer to reserves, that's transferring to some other reserves Uh, so the first one with the total transfer to reserves, that's transferring to some other reserves that, so the IT Reserve and Liability Fund Reserve. So it's just putting a bit of money in, not a lot, but a bit of money into those reserves for future costs. And then the transfer to accumulated surplus, that was to build up the accumulated surplus in the, to minimum, what's considered optimal balances. And then the balance, after all that, then we, whatever is, we bring in all the revenue, we send out all the expenses, we make the few transfers to other reserves, and then the balance is put into the water reserve.
Okay, okay. And is that a policy that sets the two for IT liability and transfers to the water accumulated surplus?
Um, it's, it's, it's part of the budgeting process. So I review whether I think it's needed or not every year, and so the water fund does it, the sewer fund does it, and then the Big Eddie Fund, they also, they all contribute a bit of money to these. The Big Eddie doesn't have any money going into accumulated surplus anymore, because the accumulated surplus it has compared to its operating expenses is considered sufficient.
It's kind of, like, it's kind of confusing, though, right? Because, like, for, for council, I think when we look at it, it's like,
Yeah.
Without, yeah, with, with not knowing what those numbers are, it creates a, yeah, a bit of uncleanness.
Yeah, fair, fair enough, and I appreciate you pointing that out to me. It helps me for future.
But, but, but it's also good to know that that's what happened, like, it's good to have the historical context. But it just, like, there's lots of, like, flexibility in there, which is good. Um, then also, when we compare that, this agenda item to the one that we have in the binders, there seem to be some discrepancies in some of the numbers, but maybe I'm just, they're not, maybe I'm not comparing apples to apples. For example, the twenty nineteen budgeted total revenue recoveries, refunds and transfers is two, two, three, eight point eight or whatever, and like, two points, two point two million in twenty nineteen, but then in the one in our binder, it's showing two point four seven, and I'm not sure if maybe they're also including some other stuff.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure, Counselor Elliott, or Counselor Ryan, it would be, yeah, maybe, maybe you can point those out to me and, and come over to my office, and then we can have a look at them, and I can hopefully explain it. It's probably the way expenses or revenues are being grouped between the two of them, between the two different spreadsheets, because they are pulling from the same, same place.
It's weird, because twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen and twenty twenty seem to be, or twenty twenty-one seem to be good, but twenty twenty, nineteen and twenty twenty seem to be off. But, yeah, I guess the only, like, the one interesting part is depending on which set of numbers is right, like, to Counselor Palmer's point on the version, there does seem to be a trend in every year since twenty seventeen, where budgeted revenue is understated by pretty significant, well, not that significant, but at least a hundred thousand every year since twenty seventeen.
Yes, and that, that'll probably, that's partly a result of the significant growth we've had in the last few years, and trying to project what kind of growth we're gonna have going forward is, is definitely challenging at times. And so, yes, I do find I'm playing catch-up each year, in the sense of, you know. And so when I, when I work on the revenues for twenty twenty-two, when I talk about, say, a five percent increase, I do do it based on actual from the prior year, not the budget number, so that's where I do catch up that, that shortfall. But yes, I agree, it's definitely been something where it's, it's hard to predict how much growth we're actually gonna have. And so as a finance person, I do tend to be a little bit more on the conservative side, for sure.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Palmer? Yeah, thank you. It looks like we've lost Mr. Black, have we?
Um, yeah, well, he's still, oh, oh, no, he's just hiding on us.
Um, yeah, so just to echo Counselor Elliott on the metering, I had caught that as well in conjunction with the golf course well treatment. The metering thing, I had that question as well, and I think not necessarily for this financial plan, but again, when we look at a more accurate or foresight in this fifteen-year plan with next, you know, come the fall, where meters maybe belongs in, in, in this whole scenario. And then I'll just note, I think we have a vacancy as the environmental or the climate change coordinator. It would seem to me that this would be their, their job, sort of understanding the projection. I'm pleased to hear about the work that you're doing with the federal government, with the weir, and having a better understanding where, you know, what's, what's the risk, long-term risk to our, our, our water system. And I agree with Counselor Elliott that metering might be an important strategy on the, when we're looking at that fifteen, twenty-year horizon. The, just the last one on the Water Capital Fund, hydrant valve inspection replacement. Again, it feels a little bit operational. And then the other thing is it feels too low to me. So just sort of a general comment on, on that, maybe there is other stuff in the operation, or sorry, the operations budget, but it's showing in twenty twenty-five hydrant valve inspection replacement, and it seems to me that we already have a hydrant problem in our city. So just something to maybe take a look at, and whether that's reflecting numbers that are accurate. I think that's probably good to announce.
So, Mr. Black, can I just ask a question that Counselor Palmer has brought that up? When we're talking about hydrant valve inspection and replacement in a conversation I had with Chief DeRosa quite a while ago, we were talking about the ability to have colored valves or covers so that fire department knew exactly how much pressure was coming out of those hydrants. Is that something that can be done when we're, when we're looking at valve inspections and replacements so that we know the water flow for our fire department, or, or what, or am I, am I talking about something totally different?
Uh, to your worship, the, the color coding of hydrants to identify pressure zones or flow rates is something that we can do. And as part of the Water Master Plan, we did create a model of the city that has been calibrated based upon flow rates at different locations throughout the city, which gives us pressure zones. And so it is something that we can move forward with, with caution. We do have some areas that we do need to provide some additional pipe size upgrades, as you're aware. Clearview Heights, CP Hill, there are some areas that are deficient. However, many parts of towns are not deficient, and we do have adequate flow throughout most of the city. However, something that we can certainly pursue in conjunction with the fire department.
All right, thank you for that. Appreciate that. Counselor Elliott?
Mr. Black, just on those six million dollars that we're sort of putting into reserve, trying to build a reserve for, is it normal for, for cities to have multiple sources of water? I mean, most, most people have a designated reserve or source of water, and they protect the hell out of it. And, but it's usually the only one that I hear of. I know we have the TomTom for the Big Eddie as well, that's, that's a source. We already have two, do we need a third?
Uh, a ques, excuse me, to your worship, a question that I'm, I'm not quite ready or prepared to, to, to go that far down the discussion. I do feel very confident that it's in the city's best interest to have a redundancy of the water system for supply for an emergency. A, a fire could happen, the ski area is at the top of Greeley watershed. A helicopter accident, a fire, any sort of thing could cause a, an issue with our intake and the water coming into the intakes. And then we would be basically without a supply for a period of time. If our main from Greeley water treatment plant to the city also broke, emergency repairs, some of it is along Highway One, if it's winter, you know, frozen ground, lots of snow. Again, it would be a horrendous condition for the city to endure for any period of time without redundancy. And so that's my, my feeling as, as the operator in, in being responsible for providing clean drinking water to the city and to all of its residents and guests. And so that's where I, I feel it's necessary for us to review and, and, and make sure that we do have that redundancy and make sure that our pipes are in great shape. Many of them are beyond their life cycle's design life. And so to be operating in this condition is, is risky. Is it out of line? No, it's very common to be operating systems with pipes that are old. But there are some that have a higher risk than others. And I believe the water supply, the watershed, and the distribution system, transmission system from Greeley is key to the survival of the community in, in our future.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if the pipes are, pipes are different, to me, we're talking well in a, in a, in a treatment plant. So, you know, we have Thomas Brook, we have the resorts building a reservoir, we have all these different things throughout community. Whether another one at the golf course is necessary, I, I don't know. Whether it's a six million dollar tax that we need, you know, that's the money for, I, I, I don't know. And that's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
If, to your worship, yes, and, and once the modern water model and the master plan comes to, to, to you for review, we can have that very robust discussion. Right now, all of our water does come from Greeley, it does go to Arrow Heights, it will fill the future RMR reservoir. And there's another reservoir planned at nine thirty meters to service the upper development of the mountain sometime in the future, too. All of that, all of those reservoirs provide the fire protection, which is roughly a third of all of the storage in these tanks, and the rest is for domestic use. And so we need to ensure that we've got that fire storage primary. But we've also got to fill all these tanks on a, on a regular basis, and with only one source. You can see now we're gonna be trying to balance filling the, the highway tank, Arrow Heights. And so it's, it is a, it's a very, it's, it's fun in many ways, and it's exciting in many ways. Let's, if I may be so bold, let's have that discussion here in a, a few weeks or a month when that master plan comes forward for, for you all to see what our consultants are, are recommending, and we can have that discussion at that time.
Just, do you want us to wait for a motion on the metering? For the master plan to come first, before we make a motion to have it investigated?
Um, if, if, given the workload that we have currently and underway, I would be quite happy to put it into initiating a program later on in the year so that we could probably bring something forward to council in the new year with a robust budgeting and, and a plan in order to implement, if that's council's desire. It's, it's something that we do need to firmly have an idea on costs, how long it's gonna take to get there, what, what our billings are gonna be, what, all of these things. So there's many moving parts to that also, and I know that the CAO, James Sacre, has got experience in this also. And so we can certainly push that forward, and like I said, I'm, I think it's a great place to go. We have not yet gotten there as far as thinking about this in the, in the long term. But something we certainly can initiate.
Yeah, it's, it brings two and three.
Yeah, we're gonna wait, there's no rationale, just, just. James and I have been discussing this, I, I think we got it, so, all right, so any other questions, otherwise we'll move on. Hey, Miss McCabe, you're back at her.
Well, thanks. The, the purpose of the meeting really is to allow council to ask questions about the different things that are in the capital plan in particular, but also in the operating plan for the different utilities. As Counselor Palmer commented, there is definitely a lot of, a lot of different moving parts to these, because there is really three different utilities that we're talking about. So that's, yeah, so that was, that's the purpose of this. And then going forward, next week, or next week, sorry, in two weeks' time, we'll be bringing forward, obviously, there's some issues with some reserve funds, both on the, on the general fund side and in the water and the sewer. And so staff will be coming back with options of how to address these shortfalls. And obviously, there's a few different ways of dealing with each one of them. And it'll depend on what council, council's prerogative is, or what you, you know, what you would like to see as to what, what we do going forward.
Any questions, counselors? Information in front of us, that's for, that's for sure, so.
Oh, and Counselor Ryan, I now see what you're talking about, so I'm gonna look into that and figure out what happened there. The joy of spreadsheets.
Okay, so any other things that we should be discussing regarding what's in front of us today, Miss McCabe?
I know, know you worship, that's all.
Okay, so council, any other questions or concerns regarding water, sewer, Big Eddie?
Or general.
Or general. Things that flow. All right, so if we have no other questions, no other concerns, do you wanna call it a day? All right, so we've got a motion to terminate Counselor Ryan, seconded by Counselor Charlette. All in favor? Motion's carried, this committee and the whole meeting is now over. Thank you, staff, thank you, council. Appreciate you, Tom.